Okay, call of orders, we should have a council meeting for June the twenty sixth, John, would you call the roll?
Matt.
Drew.
Tyler.
War.
Here.
Who?
Here.
Charles.
Here.
Stand for budge.
I pledge allegiance and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good prayer. Dear the Father, thank you for this day, be with us as we come together to work on the business of town, lead us with your guidance, so let's make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents. And again, pray amen. You got some minutes before us from the June twelfth meeting?
Yeah. We need to approve the minutes.
Motion for Warren, second Travis to approve the meeting minutes from June twelve, five, five, all favor.
All right.
Any pose, motion carries. Bill, for us as well.
Issues with the roll off.
I have not heard any issues, so I think we are good from that same point.
They definitely give me the.
I've not checked, they were still there. So.
Make a much more approved bills.
Like. Motion from Travis, second from Matt to approve the bills as written. John, do you actually, all favor?
All right.
Any pose?
That's to the vote.
Someone all a little. Signing people's cards. Clearly I did too, because I was reading something else when I turned call. Moving on to open up form this time, I'm focused on any item of general interest, specifically agenda, and within the town's health jurisdiction. Generally subject to a five minute time limit for speaker, are there any Title VI or Title II issues concerning plates from public needing the council's attention needing addressed? Hearing none. We will, we'll talk with. Brad Moore, Town Marshal.
Don't talk last day.
New car.
Um, so on that front, just so that you're fully up to speed, we signed a, we issued a demand letter. Demanding to return completion of the vehicle. That date was not met, so we then. Talked with Hartley's, they redesigned a contract stating if the vehicle is not returned to us by July first. That it's a five hundred dollar daily penalty. They did sign that, so that was approved through the lawyer. That that would be enforceable if that was the case, so we will. See what July first brings.
About them?
Do we know?
It's a really good question.
Cold about half.
About that.
Yeah. Based on.
Yeah, so, so there are elements on the vehicle. Uh, the doors in the back, bars on the front, light bars on top, mirrors, running boards, I mean, there's, there's lights all over, there's no control panel there.
That's what the problem would be if we took it back.
So. Big mess, I don't know. Stuff looks nice, it looks like we've got quality stuff on there, so hopefully it's. Installed well and hopefully so.
Well, I feel like you told us a few meetings ago that you enjoyed driving the other car, I didn't really even care about it.
I enjoyed. I'll drive Ryan's. Yeah.
Really?
More comfortable. Um, I think things are going pretty well, but everything covered. May Monday day shift was not. That will still can't work. Everything's been covered from seven thirty or eight to ten P M. The guys are doing okay. Or with our productivity a little bit more and stuff, but. Stopped. There, both guys are set up for. Reserves, get the logins. Talked to Kevin Hicks about putting you in the J two system, the P sounds, we'll see if that works tonight, or have you already tried it?
I have not.
But we'll see if that works quietly tonight. But all in all, I think things are going well. Have a problem over on Franklin Street here once in a while between neighbors. That's been read all for now. Three kids on cable, they were charged, waiting. Do you know probation, take action on that? That, any questions?
Matt said, uh, getting some ordinance violation things issued, so do we have a new process for that, or how are we? Sorry, we're still working on that.
He's got a different system than he is, I looked up all of them from two thousand.
I've not really ever been in it.
No, sit down with Patrick, but he will stay here, so. Need to get together with him. All you can do is call.
Yeah. I looked through P sounds and all the ordinance violations from two thousand twelve to twenty five, no report actually indicates, I don't know how that was filed. Patrick's program or what it was.
No, Brian, it would have to go through the county, is it county court or city court?
Sweet three.
Is it, it'd be on each of them.
This should be on each ticket. I was looking for a case report, that's to the steps, I'm familiar with doing violations. Can't find anything where it would report. Probably not.
Yeah, I don't know that. Do we require?
I don't know, we have a process for it.
Well, that's, that's why I'm here. I was Silver Smith program, because you can track that in there.
Silver Smith allows you to put in a work order for road stuff, whatever the case would be, and there's one for violations. Yeah. So Patrick or Matt can put an ordinance violation in Silver Smith, this is the theory, and then we start the legal process from there, whatever we have to do, notifications. Colton, it's Marshall Jones part, he's gonna get us a couple of the signs that they use, that door hangers and yard signs. So we have something made for us, so we can do that, so the first step isn't automatically a. A ticket necessarily, but it's still being documented in that process, so if it gets to the point where we prosecute, um, or that does play out, our first step will be. You draw up and find the violation.
I think our ordinance is pretty much the same as Mary. Uh, we got millo violation letter. Or. Gives them ten to fourteen days to get it correct, after that, if they don't correct it, then if it's trash violation, then write it up for, you know, issue ticket or whatever. But now, um. Progress. I need, I need to find a good copy of our, our ordinance because. It's set up like Marion's, like most, most places are, after June first, you only have to give a violation on the week.
Yeah, that's where we used to publish those.
Yeah. That's what I did for Mary, I puzzled it for March, oh, March, April, May. So now, if after you want to know, they technically.
Yeah.
It's still a work in progress, I am happy someone got gravel on Allen Drive. Lower lane, build in bowls with crap.
Yeah, Patrick did that today. So we still have not heard from E and B as far as that date, so basically the, the paving company is behind, um.
True.
Or not, I, I roughly forty thousand dollars they owe us right now because of violation of contract. So we probably, now that we've got this filled, we'll make a post updating the town as to what the status is, but every day they don't show up, it's a thousand bucks in our pocket, so. It's kind of like. Mister.
Have you talked to Jason about it?
Not today.
He had said, that goes back, goes out and directly out of their pocket. From the project, that is profit, so you, you won't see anything out of it. Speedy thing, man.
Yeah, we're still saving forty five thousand dollars.
But there will be a cash cow. Funny for the channel. Essentially, he is getting, he's only getting information. That explains that for it.
So it'll come off the top of the, in the call, the cost of the project.
Well, that's problematic, because that means the state's gonna get seventy five percent of that, when Michael.
That's where it.
That. Which way, that, that the state gets a share of that reimbursement too?
No. That's, I'm not sure, he just said basically it goes back out, it's taken out of contract.
United States, seventy percent.
Right.
Right.
Well, we'll, we'll have to get a clarification from Michael, Michael's understanding was they would flat owe us money at the end.
Have we already paid them for that job?
No.
So this kind of costs him.
Which is fine, as long as we don't have to. So much structure was the last. Last thing I was told. I almost asked the guy today at the store, he had, he was in an E V truck, that E V, and I wanted to do that, hey bro, where are you working at that, uh, you're not in Sweetser yet, but.
There was supposed to be structures dropped off, and I drove the town, I can't find any.
Yeah.
Nothing. Just before I came in. That's about all. Question.
Concern of the flock, everybody set up on the flock.
Clock is set up.
And you got to, that is still all of them, that's.
Everyone's together, they're through the.
Which is thousands.
Yeah. Sure.
There was twenty three requests, I shared ours with them, we have.
Yeah, so there is a group set in there for West Grant County, so that that's what our guys see primarily, they still can go out and search anything else, they can pull up whatever they want to, but. And they can, once we get, so we got new computers then, they're having all sorts of trouble with the internet and computers, so hopefully soon as we get computers. And they can start utilizing that, not only from a search perspective, but also from a perspective.
So we have used that once, and I haven't talked to you since, but this guy back here on Jackson, went and involved two hundred and eight thousand dollars in gold, but he was told to do it on the phone. And it came from the Sweetser, says Sweetser Police Department. The guy came from Chicago and picked up the two hundred and eight thousand dollar in gold. And took that. Tracked him all the way back to Chicago, easy. Came in, I think he came in from this in. Got the car initially. And that was the day after they were set up, so. So we tracked the car. That's a big scam, big scam, bringing place in couriers, so we, they'll probably never see it again, but we have the car, and we have. Nowhere rented it here for. It's been all over. Maybe they get some of the low run players, but Lieutenant Albin and Sheriff's Department's running through his fed, federal contacts, there's a big investigation still ongoing. But as states and dividends are.
Yeah.
That guy just has led a little different than he used to. Two hundred and eight thousand gold, ten or twenty thousand.
That's not my gold. I don't, I don't do gold.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Does work.
It's, it's nice to, I, I totally.
Gold.
Walk. That's real gold.
Yeah. But, but the good, yeah, I think it's, it'll be something, I mean, just from looking at what comes through on a regular basis, there's lots of. I mean, obviously lots of expired plates, there's also lots of suspended drivers, visual offenders, so there's. Some good opportunity to grab some stuff that, if the guys are. Properly motivated, I think that would be the challenge is.
It is.
I was, I was told one day, when I asked about that, well, this is our part time job, like, it's not like it's our full time job, like, but I want you to treat it like a full time job. Like I, I wanted to.
I can tell already.
It's just extra money, Brooke.
Right?
Won't be long.
Yeah. So especially once we get the computers, they're gonna have nothing to complain about, so. Did you have a question?
Yeah, um, I, okay. My neighbor.
The mini bike question?
Yeah.
Will not be on the roadway.
There will be. I thought you said it was okay.
Never.
Thank you.
Never.
That's why.
You want to ride it in the grass, you want to ride it in the gravel and be safe. That's one thing, if it's on the roadway, it has to be inflated, you have to have an I D.
And so what about the side by sides?
The side by sides are with the golf balls, that's none of my doing, whatever this, whatever they've done with the golf cart ordinance is none of my. I don't know what you don't.
We don't have the golf ball, it's just, it's, we, we repeal that, so it's, it's a. Let's see. Wild game. But, but technically, you're, if you're on the street, you're supposed to be, you know, insured and, you know, in, you know, all for.
So I've seen some that are plated, but then I've seen some that aren't.
So is that allowed maybe on the greenway?
Definitely not.
Side by side wouldn't be.
No, I mean, the, it's just like an electric bike, isn't it?
No, the electric bikes, there should be ordinance on them too, there's no, no gas, it is going.
Uh, or is this?
This is a many, many dirt bike.
Oh, okay.
Many.
Exactly, because I raced anywhere, I raced.
Yeah, well, I know the many bikes, or the electric bikes is a gray area too.
It is.
So.
Our, our ordinance technically, if I recall, uh, does not allow any type of motorized bicycle on the trail.
They designed for a trip.
Right, that was written before the, the e-bikes became so popular.
Yeah.
And so.
Technically, it goes class one, two, and three, I've already looked into all of this, there's different classes, it's by speed, there's. A speed limit on the walkway, which I think is either twenty or twenty five, e-bikes are allowed, it's a state law actually, um. But you're supposed to be treated with respect, you know, they are allowed on the roadway as well, it's to be driven like a motorcycle.
Right.
Because I mean, mine goes almost forty. I'm gonna ride it up and down the road.
Right.
It has turn signal, has brake lights, that's a headlight. But unfortunately, I don't know if you guys know this, but I'm licenseless, so. So I use that to get around. Now, I know there are kids here that. Run them up and down the road without. Knowledge of the laws and the rules for other people on the roadway, and. There should probably maybe be an age limit, if anything. I think, that's just me, I don't make the laws.
The kid with the electric bike, his dad's.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty hard on him, and he's been.
Yeah.
Well, he's done talking every time.
One's going back, back to forth here, just the last.
Oh, he's out now?
It shouldn't.
Oh, no, 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 he's on, that's my neighbor on my bike, that's your bike, yeah. And I, yeah, I told him to be careful, but I mean, and that's kind of, I'm glad we're talking about this, so we know.
A lot of it is, I don't, I don't think the kids were stopping at the stop signs and paying attention to all during traffic. From what I understand from our chat with one of the officers, when they were out, they were like, long stop signs across the main street.
And I got on him about that, on the mini bike, I told him, because one night we were on the walkway, and I said, I said, dude. You have to stop. When you come to a crossroad like that, you have to stop, because those cars can't see you, and I was like, I don't want anything to happen.
You know, match for a car, yeah.
Yeah, no.
There's a lot of worse things they could be doing, but still they have to fight.
You know, if, if you get a chance to, somebody gets a chance to talk to them, I, experiences. More than once on the trail, where they're hard to hear.
Yeah.
And so a lot of bikers, bicyclists, what they do is they'll say, you know, on your right or on your left, as they approach you, and one, one kid who's. Really driving fast, he, you know, he, he.
Just goes on by?
Yeah, he's, he's in a hurry.
Well, I, mine has a horn, and I'll slow down, especially when there's a dog, because some people, when they're out there, you know, when nobody's around, they don't have them on a leash. And that's just, you know, being respectful and mindful of other people, but when you're a kid. I mean, you know, we were all kids once, you know, so, but it's just, it's a matter of respect, I guess, you know, and that's just. Kind of on how they were brought, or brought up, and I can't be a parent that were kids, so.
That's why we have police.
Exactly.
They can do that.
But I'm glad that, you know, that this did come up, because I mean, you know, like, I do use my, I mean, that's why I use, I got mine.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah.
As long as you're driving sensible, and I've got on Weston several times about driving sensible, not, you know, take sidewalk or stay outside of the road, you don't have to weave down main street.
Yeah, and anytime like I can't, like, mine doesn't go forty five, so I just get off on the side then, but, I mean, it, it goes like forty, so. As long as I can keep up with traffic, and that's what they do out in California, you know, I mean. They'll just ride it like it's a motorcycle, you know, so, as of now, like I said, I mean, it's to be ridden as long as you follow the rules of, like a motorcycle.
Yeah, we've, I've, we've not had as many complaints on the trail as just in town, with the motorbike flying up and down, flying on the sidewalk, I was shooting on the sidewalk either.
Yeah, and I told, I got on him about it, but I was just kind of wondering where we stood with that, as far as, because like the side by sides, again, I'm just going to where, you know, we were all kids once. At least he's outside playing rather than sitting inside playing video games.
When you say side by side, like, what are you referencing, is there a specific?
The.
Like the golf carts?
No, side by side, the four wheelers, the side by sides, that's what they're called.
Like, uh.
Gears and buggies.
Yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of like John Deere gear, but it's.
Well, and the, the four, about the, the A T V things, the, yeah.
Four wheeler.
The ones that are made to do jumps and shit. Those don't have plates on them or turn signals, some do.
Yeah.
But I mean, so to me, I'm like, well, that's kind of not fair, you know, at least his shit has turn signals, it's just, he's being an idiot. That's his lack of maturity, I guess, you know, he's only thirteen.
We're looking at, um, updating traffic ordinance and public nuisance ordinance, so those will both be things that go into that discussion, try to figure out how to best. Mitigate those issues.
I think what it boils down to is just everybody being sensible. You know, I see them big ass tractors, I don't even know what they're called. Big skinny wheels, big.
Oh, the big freighter, yeah.
Yeah, those dudes be ripping through right here, you know, I don't know how fast they go, but. I'd hate to get hit by one of them fuckers. You know what I'm saying? I mean. It's thirty, you know, it's a twenty mile an hour zone through there, and they're just ripping down through there. Saying, I mean, it's a small community, and we got a lot of people using the walkway.
Ninety percent of the vehicles that they say are speeding down Main Street are not speeding down.
It just seems like it.
Seems like it, they are not, they may be going twenty eight, twenty nine, but they're not. They're not flying down, ninety percent.
That could be, maybe they need to lower it back down.
It's already twenty.
Maybe I'm just getting old, I don't know. Anyway.
That's you. Uh, the, uh. The flex badges are significantly bigger, I think there's a marshal one I'll find. Which is fine, because they're gonna, the intentions are gonna go my best anyway. So, those came in, glad to see that. Guys seem to like the new shirts.
Yeah.
Really nice. Okay, thanks Brett. We talked with Tahoe, new laptops, or you can take those to county?
Yeah, I can switch them up. I can get with I T.
Where they're gonna fit.
They're actually definitely. I'm pretty sure that might be better.
Yeah, that's what we've been in thought.
Better.
Right? We still need a boar rap policy, we also need to send somebody to training for that. Or that's, that's there, you want to go more?
It's just incorrect, it's been so long to get to, you need the one train to do.
Yeah, definitely. So Fowler is interested in going to them to be the trainer for that, uh, someone try to get a time set up with. Intrinsic, anything company, and get him scheduled for that, so that he can put on some eight hour class, so he can then teach the few hour class, and we can have guys start carrying them. So hopefully we'll make progress on that soon. We did for the first time in how many years? Received back shared court costs from the county. Were this violation, so that. Were disviolation, so that was much appreciated. That's been a goal for three years now that we finally accomplished. Glad to see that. Uh, it was previously discussed about posting the full-time marshal position on our, it's in our general. Job description, written by just a lovely AI friend. Do I have any? Discussion on that, or are we opposed to that? I did not, I wanted to get consensus for sending it off. Patrick spoke in today. I didn't came out, we passed our inspection, I think I forwarded that around as well, so we are in the clear with all things. For the state right now, so good day air. He did go through today and fill in holes around Laura and Alan. Basically just used gravel pieces to, to fill those temporarily. It was cost-effective option. Um, he is working on trading in our mowers. They both have over eight hundred hours on them. I don't know. Uh, twenty sixteen, that's about twenty sixteen units. So true equipment over in Swayze is giving us a pretty good trade-in option on those. It is a lease option similar to what we did with the John Deere tractor that we have. I believe there are three equal payments in the course of three years, uh, that we would make those.
All those, might wanna make sure we're at the state contracted price. State contracts every year, so when I was working in the city. They were able to give us the state contract price, which I think was, if I'm not mistaken, was down around eleven, so.
Yeah, so we're at thirteen-five. Currently. Why have they asked about that? So that was a state contract?
Yeah, the other state negotiates, you know, contracts for then, and then other smaller talents can take you back off of it, like they do roads, salt and stuff.
We had discussed a couple of years ago, doing some upgrades to the mowers we have, including like the seats and the suspension. So those things have been requested with the riding trail on those. It's pretty rough. I'll have him confirm. Or, or look into that state contract price.
I can fix the seat.
They uh, don't need the cover, they need better suspension.
It'll go better for them.
I love that that would be enough. Valiant effort. Any thoughts there on that front?
So they're trying to trade, we'll get what they currently have.
Yes.
Is that the only place he's gonna check record?
I think they were. I don't know if it's still Harper then, but I think they were possibly.
I think so. I know uh, Revolution outdoor, the bypass battery dealer. Pretty good deal. So we just, we can pick up four of these.
We want to trick around. Um, I do not know where we stand on our biscuit bench. It should be getting installed soon. I was looking for. Yeah, we'll deal with there. Good on Patrick.
There wasn't anything to see there.
Uh, Sean's from SNS said we dropped off a check and a, many papers. I guess it's in the thing. Yeah, hey, uh. Who said, wasn't somebody gonna do the two hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, better ambulance.
Who?
The ambulance.
Sweaters ambulance.
They're doing the two fifty? Well, who do I make that? Well, then, do they need a piece of paper?
Yeah, I will. I'm the, I'll, I'll be the one writing the check for it.
Okay, I'll give you one of these. And then when we, I had her, I had the lady that works in there. I'm still waiting on a couple people, babe. So that's good that we got that big one, you know. So that's for you. Sean from SNS, he was doing the, the Best in Show trophy, and then I got a few more um, today, and then a couple people. I'm still waiting on them, but I was trying to have a deadline by today, but I may have to extend it till next week. And with the lady on. I don't know whether to say it. Yeah, can you get me, and I'll need copies of all this, so I can take it to Pro Prints and they can know who to put, yeah. But she made me, when I deposited the money before, she made me a receipt and then just copied it. That way, you know, I've covered my ass or whatever, so can I have another one?
Yeah.
And so here's another, uh, three hundred bucks for that. Yeah, she just, I think she wrote me like a receipt and then just covered a piece of paper and put it, just did it like that, if you don't mind. Other than that, and so we got an update at two fifty, so whenever you do that, let me know.
Sure.
We're close to, I think we almost got enough money.
I can get the check real quick when I get home. So it says on here, it's trophy plus marketing plus dash flags for the two fifty?
Yes.
What trophy is that sponsored, you know?
You'd be you would be one of the top twenty. Yeah, so you'll have, yeah, make sure you write that, your, is it sweets or parent?
It'll be a, I'll probably put it in a sweet or apples as well. It's Grand County EMS.
Well, whatever you wanted to say on the trophy, because that's kind of how I'm keeping track of.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a couple other dudes, like I said.
Um, so did our art guy? And did he send us the invoice yet though?
I don't know, I think he got mad at me. But I did, I finally reached out to him, I'm like, bro, I've been trying to get a hold of you, because he does some of my skateboarding work.
Yeah.
And I'm like, I should have some money for your, here you, here for you soon. And he's like, okay. So. And I'll smooth it over, but I need to get it paid, yes.
We'll get a, get an invoice so John can get a check that way.
Okay.
And, right, e- even if it's.
How about, how about we do this? Write me a check and then I'll just pay him on Cash App. And then I can still get you an invoice.
Okay.
I mean, I can show you proof of payment or something.
Well, even if Yeti, Yeti, Yeti threads?
Yeah.
Gives us an invoice for a hundred bucks for car show.
Artwork.
Artwork, that's fine, that'll.
I can do that. I can do that actually, and I'll email it to you.
Yeah.
So I have your email address.
Yeah.
So that solves that. Okay, so four hundred, I gave you three hundred. It should be another drop of hundred. From Sean Robinson at SNS, so that makes eight hundred. And then his two fifty, that makes a thousand and fifty. Eleven hundred. Eleven fifty. Twelve fifty. Thirteen hundred. What's the total on the invoice? Or what? Do you have the copy of the invoice, the, or the Pro Prints estimate?
No, Tyler, I mean, I may have something in my email, but Tyler had.
I got it on my phone.
And you say three hundred, there's, there's two hundred. There's three of two fifty.
Yeah, there's two fifties. Okay, and then another hundred. Wow, shit, well, I have to donate, I'm gonna donate one too. I kind of made up my mind, whatever, if we don't get twenty. Guess I'll just have to donate a couple myself. I'm fine with that. I was gonna do one at least. Uh, the invoice. Actually sent it to Tyler. It is for thirteen sixty-two. That's with dash plaques, that's with the the twenty plaques, five trophies, why am I, oh, the one Best in Show. And then fifty dash plaques. So I'm still confused, couple more people to sponsor. So if anybody knows anybody that has a business.
So we have copies now though of everybody that has so far, once we get Sean's.
They, I think I had her make a folder.
Okay.
Like a new folder.
Okay. Sarah back next week, John?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll compile a list, so we have a running running list of who's sponsored, and then we can figure out from there, if we need to go after some more and.
Yeah, because we need to get these orders.
Yeah, have they given you a timeframe turnaround?
He told me it'd be about a month. He needs a month.
From Pro Prints?
Yeah, but I'm thinking, you know, the sooner we can.
Yeah, for sure.
You know?
Yeah.
So it's almost July. But technically, we have probably like seven, eight weeks, but.
So John, if you could check, see if we have in that Carson Reverting, whatever fund we decided, around fifteen hundred bucks is what we're gonna need. Uh, for our expenses so far.
If we use that yield system.
Yes, that's right.
Well, and Say, we may have people wanting to donate later too, but they're, we're not gonna have time to get them in order.
I'm sorry, what was the question? Just thinking, okay.
I've got a couple questions.
Yep.
You can hear back to me, sure, so they have questions, or they can call us the, the event. So officially, maybe the event is.
Sweetzer switch show.
Location, town of Sweetzer, obviously, they'd be isolated to downtown.
Yeah.
Main Street and then where we grow.
They'll probably just want the town hall address.
Hours of the event.
My name is four A and report in, right? May want it to be maybe branch insurance region, might want, just for the whole day, I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would just put it eight to four. The coverage will be valid the whole day, but they're, they're just trying to figure out.
At least next two, we just simply guess, estimated number of the teams.
Hundred twenty-five.
Next, let's say, best name of vendors, I think, but they say good news, they they're referring to anyone who's entering. I think.
This ones, yeah.
I can answer multiple names.
I would think.
Less is better. Less, less information, I mean, let's not complicate.
I would think though, that that would go under attendees, participants.
Yeah.
When I think of vendors, I think of like food vendors. Or whoever's setting up a booth sponsor.
When you say, you said I have food and attendees, that would be entrance.
Entrance or well, workers, if, if anybody that's going to be. Yeah, yeah. Yes. And I would say maybe six or eight vendors, they're looking at food, I don't know what we're gonna end up with as far as booths. And again, they're not going to come back and say, oh, you've had nine vendors, we're gonna deny the liability claim. They're trying to find something to base their information on.
The last question. Get this back to him tomorrow and chat.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Marcus. We will, so that's what he's gotta get invoiced to get paid, so we can get it colorized.
So to next, next uh, meeting is what day? Like, it's be two weeks from now.
Yeah, July ten. You see that?
So we still have more than a month.
On the trophy sponsorship and the marketing, is that, what's that mean? What's the marketing?
Announcer, P A, dart sign, and all that.
What's your name, Mr.?
The business to get them in.
Oh, yeah, like if you did a banner.
Are you set up to take credit card payments or just cash check, what?
Cash check, money where?
I had somebody wanna do PayPal, and I'm like, I don't have PayPal. You guys have PayPal? You know, I only have Cash App. Alright, well, yeah, that's pretty much all I got. We're close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Marcus. Onto continuing business. We sent out an email about a meeting request for July. Yep, sounds about right. So I got a call from Aaron at RQAW. We were not officially ranked on the project priority list. Because of the timing with SRF and Okra. But based on the score that they gave us, we would be, I'm guessing, I can't remember exactly, I believe it was number eleven on the project priority list, which is high enough for funding. On the project priority list, which is high enough for funding. So they did not score us, excuse me, they scored us, but did not put us on the P P L because. They're trying to. Leave the P P L for actual projects that they're gonna fund in the current fiscal year. Basically, they're suggesting we wait and fund in the next fiscal year. And so that's what, because to me, it just seems a little sketchy. And so that's why I asked to meet with. Camille from S R F, so that she can explain that, so I hear it from her, not from our engineer. On what they're suggesting, because what that suggestion is, is that we go ahead and begin. The early phases of design. So that we can submit for. Okra and S R F. Concurrently, for the next round, which would be in December. And so basically, what Camille, my understanding is what Camille is going to share with us is that. S R F is willing to provide the funding, the loan funding. There are some options for grants. She obviously cannot guarantee what those grants would look like yet. But basically, they, they understand that Sweetser does not qualify on the. Income merits, but that there are other factors to that. And so they're willing to work with us to try to get the project done. They like the aspect of what we're trying to accomplish, plus the regionalization with the school. They like the project, they like the way things look. But they don't wanna fund it in the current fiscal year. So one of those three steps forward, two steps back kind of thing. So that's what that meeting is, if anybody can join us, then, uh, Patrick, myself, Sean, Mike, Peter, Matt, Mike, Peter will be on that. Just. I believe it's, uh. I made the assumption it was electronic. But we can, uh, confirm all of that. But that was somebody else's hearing besides me, and. Yeah.
I just remember it was in the middle of the day, it was like.
Yeah, it was. Uh, the nine, ten thirty on the nine. It does not say. The venue.
So I guess.
John, what, uh, what'd you start to say?
I got a, I had a short meeting, assuming the Sean thing. And a couple of questions about the rate study, but they mentioned that. Train, we would not get on till. Sometime twenty-eight or. Be three twenty-four, it turns on twenty-seven, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. Sean said that S R F likes to have a third lease upon. So I'm gonna check with S B O A and see if they're. If we request it.
That sounds like a bad idea.
Yeah, I'm not really crazy about it.
And so the, the one from, because we just concluded that January twenty-four, right?
Yeah, two, and that was twenty-two.
So recent, as in the years being audited, not when the most recent audit was.
Okay, so that would put us, it would be probably early twenty-seven, if they could do, well, you know. I don't know if they can just drop them, or put somebody in there.
Yeah.
It's a pretty, pretty tight schedule, so, uh, I'll, I'll check with them, see if there's a.
Sarah said she likes organizing, so I said with you, with three bits, I was trying to talk to her now. I said, have you been upstairs to sell the records? She goes, yeah. So there's, there's plenty of organizing to be done, you.
Brought one of my boxes out, she's been working on.
Yeah.
And she's, she's been doing really well.
She made mentions me that she would, she would work here as much as we would give her. So I think if.
I think she's, she's probably capable.
She just happens to live out down.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe.
It's almost a ball match cabinet. Maybe it isn't, I think that's converse.
So, yeah, it could be Miami, I don't know. Yeah, she seems to do a good job, and so. If it come budget time, we need a budget for more hours for that role. There's lots to be done, so.
Will she come the fall?
I think she would like to work here more. Yeah. So. Jack, you got anything? I put some things on continuing business, just so they don't get lost on us. We do need the lawyer for most of them, so. I do not have anybody in mind for our sport. We had the brief. Idea about, uh. Name of Patrick, our president, but let's see if it's on anywhere as of right now. The H R policy, I know we did some review on, I think Michael wants to have a special meeting on that. We can work on that in July. We need to check them on foreclosures. On some of our lean issues. Anything else for continuing business? So I had Alan Busby. Uh, Busby Systems send me proposal, he came in, looked our things over, our, our equipment. And. Sent that out, eighteen hundred bucks, nineteen hundred bucks, basically. It's gonna be new camera. A new mixing system, so that our audio and video go in to the mixing system, then into the computer. Using a lot of the existing stuff that we have. And. Is willing to also help us make sure that our YouTube channel is set properly. We do have a YouTube channel out there, I just have to figure out what the credentials are for it. The only thing's not included on here. Another, we made the YouTube before, we had the Susan's dying emails, yeah. We made it just for the guy when he came to the history, so it's the only video we have out there, the historian came. To share. Uh, this is not included new computer. He said there is a chance that if we get. Everything in and set up, the computer we bought, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars, meaning it is a cheapo unit. Because all we were doing was trying to connect to Zoom. There's a chance we may need a new computer out of it. Something else that's not included that we had talked about previously, was getting a bigger TV on that wall. And then running a second TV behind us for audience to see things that we're putting up there. Those are not included, this basically is just to get us to. To be good enough to Zoom or to, uh, stream to YouTube. I don't have the.
Recorded.
Well, it will be.
Cause it has to be archived.
Right, I don't remember this. Twelve weeks, six months, there's, there's a. Requirement on it. Will still be. Correct, so we're still gonna be streaming. Through, yes, you did. That's why everyone kept laughing, we're like, uh.
I didn't know, my apologies.
We'll have the meeting through Zoom, so we can still have outside interaction, but then it will be posted to YouTube. For posterity. Yes. And he believes he has everything in stock, so we can get it, uh, turned pretty quickly. Which we do have everything archived, it's just not easily publicly accessible. Which we could pull up like three years of meetings right now on here. So in theory, all we would need to do is convert the meeting that we have saved to an uploadable file to YouTube. So we have most of the pieces in place, but. Right, and, and the recording we have is grainy, it's harder to hear, we don't use our mics ever. So once the system is integrated, if we have mics on, it's gonna feed into this mixing board and. Give us a better. Product all around that way.
Can you show me how to locate the past eight?
Maybe?
Cause there was one last year where. I wasn't here. And I got here like halfway through. And someone was trying to record it, but I think you tried to send it to me.
The newer. Uh, technology here too has capabilities to create notes and outlines based on it. So if we get proper input to the system, the A I may be able to create you.
Yeah.
A series of minutes that you can just adjust from. Yeah, right, I sort of might do not like the county setup as far as their cameras. I would try to bounce back and forth and zoom in, cause it's never. Never seems to be, yeah, yeah.
And the customer. Can you make sure, can you bring me a copy of that? I'll get it to five, like, when we see that, or have Sarah do it in the morning.
But she won't be here back. Oh, I'll, I'll will stop out some. I grabbed a bundle of things out there.
Yeah, I have to go, guys. Sorry about the, I didn't.
Hopefully, A I will block it out.
Well, make a mention, we go ahead and prove, uh, Busby's proposal.
Uh, motion from Travis, second from Matt to approve the appraisal, or excuse me, estimate from Busby Systems. John, you wanna cover all of that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
What she carries. I will get. Alan started on that. Uh, again, with Michael trap boarding updates, basically, our something all. Created in the seventies and added to and taken away and added again. So I think, since we're now switching from the ordinance. Platform, if you will, to the codified. Series. It will clear things up after trying to go forward with ordinance violations or traffic violations. So I'll try to get Michael to start working on that. Our nuisance ordinance is cumbersome. I think there's a lot of detail about what kind of weeds are. Considered nuisance, but I think it should just say if. You know, the town council decides that the property is.
This should just be weeds and everything.
Right. If it, if it looks like crap and it's too tall.
Yeah.
Includes Canada thistle, Johnson grass, sorghum, alum, bird cucumber, I, I mean. That, that, are we gonna have to go through and?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna play.
Yeah.
Classify each. Now, if, if it's too tall and looks like crap. Clean it up. Now granted, it comes up a point where you're stepping on. Potentially stepping on, you know, things as far as how they wanna keep their own property in their rights, so we have to be aware of that, but. There are several around town that's related. Work.
Including some big.
H B fifteen oh nine, John, have you looked into that much?
No, I just happened to see it. I just saw it today.
I asked Michael to get us some more info on that. The AIM email that went around was not specific on the, or the, uh. The bill itself and what we have to change, so we'll make sure we're, excuse me, compliant with that. It's what you forwarded.
Was that, was it one about listing people's?
Yeah. So we'll get that figured out. I don't think I had sent. These next two ordinances out from. Area plan, so I will send those out and we can take action this time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should have adopted those.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, so far it's been pretty tame, because I can't actively get the solar weapons.
Do we? Because we are the terrorists. Obviously, we don't control. So like, what, I. Do we need to do it just? Just like it's to fall in line?
So, sort of, so basically, area plan. Operates in the municipalities that are part of area plan, plus unincorporated grant count. And if we don't adopt it, then they can enforce that, or that's in sweets. They can still enforce it in, you know, uh, unincorporated, on land or not, so it's. In sweets, so like, if it was, let's say, not solar, let's say it was simple building code.
Do we need to write our ordinance, or is it?
No. It's, we're basically just.
Up where they're playing. Up where they're playing.
For adopting that, that we're done, that we. We don't have to. The new director has been going back and. Not this one, it's the group and some others, they've found, they're trying. Make sure they're. Absolutely watching the county, the county.
Flood damage prevention ordinance is the, the second one.
Yes.
Which they did send out new maps and things, which are in the front office there, because it's, it gets boring, it's like flip my maps. I don't think I have anything else in this business, anybody else got, uh, anything we didn't cover?
It's not, I think, urgent, that Angie Jipper wants up twenty four seven, doesn't wanna kind of. Get, get some people in Switzerland together to kind of be more.
She had to just come to town today and talk to five.
I think that's what's coming to town. Wish you that with, um, the, uh, the Missouri Bureau. The Missouri Bureau and like Chuck Riefer's. Bill Robb, I can, some.
Yeah.
And mission was last meeting, I was gonna keep. Check to see if there's any reason not to. Got an email from. Police management requesting a copy of the, of current contract. Think it is possible, anything that we can.
Yeah, they, so.
They, he said, I, he said, if, uh, I can file, therefore I am, it was, it's, he said.
It may be a different rep now, but I'm pretty sure I sent them Kirby, it's been Kirby. I sent them a copy previously, so it's probably just a different rep, but then somebody else reached out to us. Asking regarding proposal, they wanted the details. And I told him that we would. Open R F P for quarter. That gives us time between now and then to put that information together, so. I, I mean, if they want a copy of the current one, go for it, but that's not necessarily what we're going to. Request next time around. Patrick did file a complaint with Republic about damage to roadways. They're leaking oil all over the place. And it's just getting worse, yeah. I wonder, but yeah, I've seen evidence of it, yeah. Probably nothing can be done with that if I had to guess, but we can have Michael. Review our agreement with them as well, because there is a provision for damages. But I believe there's like an exclusion for. Unforeseen maintenance issues or something like that, so probably get out under. But it's bad. Right, yeah, when they're not there that long, but man, the puddle is.
Have you? I don't know if he's still. Our rep and what, uh, Craig Woods or less.
Yeah, whoever our rep was died. And then Francesca was working with us briefly. But then I think Sarah had a conversation with the new rep that. I, I was thinking that was the meeting. You were going to but couldn't attend, so she did something along those lines, I don't know exactly, but. Anything else?
Bush and Jordan.
On favor?
Aye.
Is he supposed to say that or you're supposed to?